Okay, as everybody's heard, this meeting is being recorded. Without further ado, we'll jump right into it. First item on the agenda today is the Fall Town Meeting Capital Improvement Plan. We'll turn it over to Joe and Madeline.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. We have a request that was-
Vice Chairman.
Vice Chairman, well, Acting Chairman. We have a request for the Fall Town Meeting of $333,600. We did go through the plan and relook at some areas or priorities and move things. As you know, every fall, we tweak our requests based on those things that are really, if you will, must-have needs type of situations. We usually defer everything to the summertime for more of the long-term issues. But we have the install of the fire protection devices recommended at $92,000 for the middle school. This is so that the devices can communicate with the main fire panel. Currently, that's an issue. That's a one-time cost. Technology displays, this is the second year that these are on there. We deferred them from the Spring Town Meeting. We like to keep them on here for especially the teaching and learning that's taking place. At $75,000, that's district-wide. The bathroom partitions and auto flushes on the toilets and urinals. These are, partitions are old and need a repair. Some of actually crumbling underneath, if you will, they're just so old. And the auto flushers are water savers, so we're hoping to cut back on our water bills. That's district-wide, is $50,000. The hot water tanks at the middle school are pretty significantly in need of repair. With the COVID situation, this is so important to maintain our water temperature and pressure at the levels that are recommended. So this is an opportunity for us to not worry about getting into an emergency situation in that building at 86.6. And then the last request is the purchase of a used minibus. Again, this was in the spring for athletics. This is actually depending a lot on what happens with the sports. This might be something we can put off, depending what's happening with sports this year. I will know something by Wednesday of this week, is what I'm being told. Potentially recommendations for the school committee to consider. And that gives us our total of $33,3600 for the Fall Town Meeting. It does require a motion and a vote.
Okay, does everybody have any questions on any of the items? No, just one question for me, Joe, on the minibus.
Yeah.
So we would be purchasing this when?
We would purchase this right away, if in fact we got it in the fall, because that would alleviate our transportation issues. This is the second year we put it. It's actually the first year, because it was in the Spring Town Meeting for the first time, and now this is the second time. So we currently, our bus situation that we have is we've had an older bus that we've been able to utilize. This allows for us to, but that went off to the shelf and utilize a new used one because of the miles and age. That's part one. Part two, there's the potential that small teams, when they have to travel, ID a track meet down the Cape. We don't now, no longer necessarily have to take the regular transportation mode. We can utilize this as a way to save money.
All right, so my question would be on the minibus. I assume we're still going to be under the same mandates for the-
That's correct.
Is that going to be a debate?
Well, we use it. We don't know the specifics of athletics yet, but it seems as though much of the athletics is being pushed to happen on weekends and that the actual games played is going to be cut by almost 50%. There are two reasons for that. Number one, health and safety. Number two, we've lost through the MIAA officials, approximately very close to 50% of the officials. In other words, they don't want to officiate. So that has helped to, not helped, but that has also caused another significant issue. So we don't necessarily know how many people are going to have to travel and when. What this does is it gives us a savings over time instead of operational budget.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? No, is there any public comment or questions? I see none. Does anybody else see any? Okay, I would extend a motion to approve the Fall Town Meeting Capital Improvement Plan as written in your packet.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have Sheri with a motion and Kathleen or Dan with a second.
Please.
Okay, all those in favor, Sheri Cohen?
Yes.
Kathleen Stern?
Yes.
Dan Sheedy?
Yes.
And myself, Dinesh Alas, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, second item on the agenda is our Fall Town Meeting articles.
So I'll have Matt come into this a little bit and Jen and Karen, if they so choose, and even Vinnie, Casey, and I don't think, I don't know if Wade's on tonight. But so, as you all know, we've been trying to figure out our budget without even knowing what our budget is, except for that, that was moved at town meeting. We are appreciative that the town meeting voted that. The issue right now is the increased costs that go with COVID that are going to be above and beyond any COVID money that we're getting. As you know, we've put in for X number of dollars through the CARES Act on the town side, and then we have a $500,000 grant that's also going towards personnel and backfilling costs for PPEs and all of that. The issue here is, for the first time, we have a request for as many as 23 leaves of absence that we are currently working on. These leaves of absence mandate at minimum 60 days of paid salary, full salary. And we also, at the same time, need to hire personnel to actually have in front of students. So this is part of the increase that you see here for staff to support both the remote and the hybrid. Now, what's important about this, and I hate to say this, but I think it's appropriate, to be honest, this request for $227.5 could completely change if all of a sudden we're completely closed or only in remote, and now we've potentially caused a layoff situation with the town. We would have to consider at that time potentially returning funds to the town based on getting the funds. The second part is everything to do with transportation. The extra cleaning costs, the rate increases, and then the lost revenue from fee reductions, which cannot go into grants. The cost for the transportation increases cannot go into the grants because they are fixed operational costs and they're not allowing us to simply say, well, because it goes up $185,000, you can just put it into the grant. We're not allowed to do that. Same thing with lost revenue. We have been fighting and beating that drum to try to get it. So our current request is for $775,775, which includes our teletherapy and counseling contract services at $143.50, transportation totaling $405,025, which includes a lost revenue of $108,000, and staffing to support the remote at $227.5. Added to that, the grant that we're putting in will have approximately $200,000 more. Here's the problem. Currently, the grant can only pay salaries till the 30th of December 2020. So that means we have to allocate funding in some way for staffing for January to June. So that's where this $227.5 is coming in. We will absolutely try to do our best to take care of the grant money and zeroing it out, because that's the appropriate thing to do. But on the other side of it, when we still need those people on January 1st, if that's true, then we need funding for January to June. Matt, I don't know if you want to add, or the team, if anybody wants to add any other comments to this.
Can I ask a question on that? So we've, a couple of times now, we've discussed the fact that the funding goes only to the end of December.
Yeah.
Is the issue that they're not funding us through the rest of the year or that we have to have expended the money by December 30th?
Well, Matt, I'll defer to you.
So that's a limitation of the CARES Act. When they passed the legislation, they declared that everything had to be spent by December 2020.
And so when the act went through at the federal level, if you remember, that would have been sometime in that April-May time period. And they just left it as a December 30th. And then when the governor gave us the $225 per student, that is also CARES Act that came directly to Massachusetts, except for Plymouth County and Boston. Everybody else applied as a state, and then everybody got a piece of the pie according to the number of students that you have.
So it sounds like, Matt, that we're not suggesting that they should increase the funding. I mean, clearly, we'd love them to do that, but it sounds like our issue is that the expenditure has to occur so early in the year. And if that's the case, like we always talk about, money's fungible, right? So, I mean, let's just expend all of it in the beginning of the year and move some of our town-provided revenue for salaries to the second half of the year.
Well, that's our intent, is exactly what you just said. Our intent is to take care of as much as we can for everything that we can, including personnel, until the 30th. But what I'm also suggesting is that when it comes to certain revenues around transportation and around the staff for the rest of the year, we don't have those funded. So the thing, for example, through you, Mr. Vice Chair, through you to the rest of the members, what the town can suggest is, well, why don't we keep a monthly rolling of what this is going to look like in January and February and so on, and then come back to the Spring Town Meeting? We could also utilize that process. My concern is, every year, we have to deal with significant issues around special education that are beyond our control, and we know we're going to get some of those this year as well. So right now, we're in good shape in that department in terms of costs. We've gotten a couple of breaks, but to be quite honest, we're also very concerned long-term. As Matt would say, between the town, we appreciate very much them allowing to get us some of the technology and the PPEs. If we're in school for the rest of the year, what we're trying to do right now is buy even more PPEs, but I'm being cautious not to overbuy as well. I mean, it's that, you know, damned if you do and damned if you don't. You know, we bought 500 gallons of hand sanitizer. Well, that's awesome. That's a gallon per office and classroom in the district, but we can't even have that much in each of the buildings. We have to distribute that into smaller containers because it's a combustible, or potential combustible. We're looking right now at scrubs for certain specialized staff in our specialized programs because they're going to be in such contact with kids, they're probably never going to be six feet apart with some of those students. So we're looking at the traditional scrubs process. That's going to cost us, and we'll put into the grant, between now and the end of December, around $9,000. Then we still have to fund it from January to June for another $9,000, roughly, as an example. So I can't just say, well, here's $18,000 for the scrubs, because it's a service delivery process.
So is the town manager and the town accountant aware of how our numbers look right now?
Yeah, we have a planned meeting with them tomorrow. We sent this up to them already last week, per the date that this published, and we're specifically meeting tomorrow to discuss the CARES Act, the grant, these requests, and literally opening up our books and saying, how do we want to deal with this? Because again, do I think that there's a potential that any of this funds, we could have new funding coming in? There's some talk about that, and the House and the Senate, you know, as we know, it's us versus them up there. No compromising, it's, you know, probably we'll know in November if we're going to get more money. And the question then becomes, I mean, my intent would be to inform you, the school committee, than any request that we have for money that's above and beyond, that we can take care of later with a grant and/or money from the feds. I think that's only fair to the county that. But at the same time, I think it's really impossible for me to say to somebody, now, anybody that I hire, I'm going to be saying to them, they're a premium, long-term sub, they make X number of dollars, but at the same time, I can't stop anybody from applying for benefits. I can't tell somebody by law, no, I'm sorry, I'm not giving you benefits. That's a process that they have to utilize with the town hall, so there could be an expenditure there for them. Because again, everything is, under the CARES Act, under FMLA, and then under ADA, everything is got a protocol and a procedure and the local contract. So the local contract, for example, has child raring, which is a non-paid leave of absence versus a maternal leave right after pregnancy, 12 weeks, and then you can get a medical loan potentially longer, depending on the situation. All of that is local contract and FMLA at the same time. When you look at the CARES Act, there's a specific part of the CARES Act that only allows for people to do child raring at X number of dollars, up to X number of days, up to X dollars amount, and then you no longer have that covered. And then there's the FMLA, which allows for up to 60 days of paid, and then you can take a leave of absence, or if you have the sick days, you can put in for the sick days through medical notation or go to the sick bank in the union if you don't have it. And that's a different process itself.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions on this? No, if not, I'd open up for public comment or questions. And I do not see anyone. Okay, all right, I would entertain a motion to approve an article for the, this is for the Fall Town Meeting, Joe, correct?
Correct.
For the Fall Town Meeting, to see if the town will appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds amounts not to exceed $775,775 and to be added to the FY 2021 school department budget.
So moved. Second.
Can we have that motion by Kathleen and second by Sheri, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's correct.
All those in favor, Dan Sheedy? Kathleen Stern?
Yes.
Sheri Cohen?
I-
And me, Dinesh Alas, yes. All right, next up on our agenda, we have the first reading of school policies on the ACAB harassment and EDCFA face coverings.
So both of these policies are coming to you as first readings, so this is not required of vote. This is basically just any changes, recommendations, things that you want to see, more information that you want to have. It's part of the process as the school committee implements policy. I'll defer on the harassment one to Jen, who really has been the person in the district that oversees this area.
All right, thanks, Joe. So this is actually an update from the U.S. Department of Education and the Office of Civil Rights. Earlier in the year, I believe it was roughly May, they made some updates and a final ruling on Title IX, which is discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs. Also coming under Title IX is areas of sexual harassment. So there are a few key changes in this policy. The first one is that it used to be that previously we would have to look into cases of alleged misconduct or harassment that might not be under our authority. So for example, if something took place at the community, around the community, or actually things that now that occur outside of the United States, those are considered to be outside the school's authority and are not under our umbrella of things that we are supposed, that we have a required response to. That's probably the biggest change initially within this here. The other component is, you know, upon actual knowledge of harassment or assault, that we are required to respond in a meaningful way. However, we're not required to actually conduct an investigation unless we receive a formal complaint. So that is something that is very new. It still allows anyone to file a formal complaint, but it could be that, in the past, it was, once we had knowledge, we were required to conduct the investigation. And now that step doesn't happen until after the actual complaint is filed. Additionally, there are a couple of different standards in terms of evidence. School districts are given a little bit more flexibility when it comes to looking at different types of evidence within this process. However, of course, you know, our legal team has recommendations on, you know, using, you know, evidence that is customary in civil cases, which is preponderance of the evidence. And there's a lot of big words in this policy here. So looking at, really being consistent across that, across looking at different types of evidence. And then again, making sure that the due process is followed within an investigation. So the policy that you see here is actually the MASC version of this harassment policy. There's also some updated definitions that are there as well, and some pretty specific criteria in terms of how the due process should go through. So as Joe mentioned, this is a first read of this. I apologize that the old version was not there, Dinesh. I'm more than happy to get you the old version. We can kind of see them side by side. But because this is a federal law, we do need to update our policy to coincide with this. And then we're also, you know, trying to schedule some admin PD for those 10 days that are coming up, so that way our principals and those who actually conduct the investigations are up to date on what these new regulations mean.
So this is going into the policy that we rewrote with?
Yes.
And there's no way, this is their recommendation, so there's no way to shorten it? Because I know, like, we really kind of tried to make-
True, right. And what we, when Kathleen, when you and I and Joe went through that whole massive manual, we had to really take out those procedural things, unfortunately. Or fortunately, I guess, depends on your perspective. This type of policy where it's so aligned with federal mandates, I think it's really important to have that language in there. So that way, if there is an issue, it's not only in our handbook, but we can share the policy with the community and explain, you know, why certain, you know, certain investigative measures were followed or why we may have chosen X, Y, and Z because of that policy.
We have to, as part of the requirement, there'll be two other things coming forward for you to vote on eventually. Number one, who your coordinator is for Title IX, which is typically out of Jen's office, if I remember correctly. Who are the complaint, who are the people who receive complaints in each of the building? And then, and then the last part is that, once that is all done, we have to formulate and send this actually out. This is one of the new policies that requires us to actually publish it with everybody and anybody, everybody on that works for us, as well as all parents.
And I guess my next question would be, and I don't know if this goes to you, Jen, or what, but the face covering, so if that's also going in the policy, I think we need to change the beginning that it's just not the COVID-19 pandemic. Because if we're putting this in our policy books, this should be for anything that comes up to this magnitude.
So the harassment one is not a relationship to the COVID.
I'll defer to Joe on that one, on the face-
So the harassment policy has nothing to do with the COVID. It was already in play. It's the face covering one that is specifically related to COVID only.
Right, but that's going in our policy book, right?
Correct, so what would happen is-
But what I'm saying is, instead of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is what's happening right now, we should be more all-inclusive of it so that if something else comes down the road that's called something else, and it requires face covering, we don't have this limited just to COVID-19.
Yeah, you could do that. The policy was written directly around that. The last line on the policy says that the policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee. So what we would have to do is rescind it, because this is very specific to COVID. If you wanted to make it specific to other pandemics, I guess you could write it that way. Hopefully, there are not going to be any other pandemics during my tenure. I think I've had it with pandemics. But yeah, I mean, we can take that into consideration too.
I think, I think we should leave it as is, Kathleen. The reason is, you know, you're just talking about the sexual harassment, keeping the stuff as short as possible. I mean, I would love to get this thing out of there as soon as we can. We can always kind of put it in the files for a future pandemic and bring it back. But the way it's written right now, it does, it does in theory have a finite, finite time to it. So I would say, let's leave it as it is now. And Jen, just really quickly, no need to send me the old policy on the sexual harassment. I'm actually remembering it now. I remember Kathleen kind of jogged my memory that we had done this. And the reason I'd asked Joe about that originally was because it did sound boilerplate. And with Kathleen mentioning that, I remember one of the issues that we had was that there was, there was something in place that the reporting person was, whomever it was, was the principal, you had to report to the principal, for instance. And one of our concerns was, well, what if that's a person involved? And this policy, their policy actually has an out where it says you do not have to report it to the official designated, you can report it to whomever you'd like. So don't need to send it to me, and I'm very happy with the boilerplate.
So the only, the only other one that is somewhat debatable is this policy from the school committee on face covering mentions face masks or face coverings. I think we have to be very definitive about that in some ways as well, in the sense it's a first read. One would be any of the masks that are pulled up, but they're not really considered to be quote masks, that coverings. The other one is people who just want to wear handkerchiefs, which again, could be considered a face covering, but those are not recommended by the Board of Health with us. And the third one is those that have the quote, I guess we'll call it, the valve. The valve is all right for you, but it's not good for people you're with because it still allows for things to come out through the valves. So when we're talking about face masks, I would urge us to probably look at this very carefully, and phrases like face coverings, we may want to be clear about.
And Joe, I think when we finalized our plan for the community and for the Department of Education, we were a little bit more specific about face masks that had ear loops. We talked about not, that the masks with the valves were not appropriate for students and staff to wear at school. So I think, you know, that's a great point. We want to make sure that we're being consistent.
So think about that as being-
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Joe.
I was going to say, just think about it as a first reading, that you may want to, you know, take a look at that language a little clearer, or just leave it this way, just remember that we're going to have to administer it. And we don't want to get into this back and forth with people about what is a face covering and what's not, because people are being very creative.
I think it probably makes sense for us to work on this now and have it in place since we're starting school in, what, three weeks?
Right.
But I think that we need to specify exactly, like Jen, what you just said, you know, the mask with the ear, you know, over the ear or whatever, and not the ones with the, I can't think of the word.
I think they're called gaiters, right? Like, yeah, so one is for gaiters.
They're the pull-up.
Yeah.
But they did say, if they're doubled up, if it's just a gaiter itself, it's not good. But if they did, on the Today Show anyway, they showed that if they're folded, and so it's doubled up, it's acceptable, I guess.
But that's what people are doing with bandanas as well. So they're folding a bandana over and putting that over. So I, I just wonder if we shouldn't be specific about certain masks and not the ones, you know?
I think we should, I think we should clarify, and again, I wanted to have the discussion because a lot of people have different opinions, but I think it just needs to say face masks, parentheses, what they are. And I think things like gaiters all day on a student or a staff member or, you know, any other type of situations, just going to make it more of an issue, not less of an issue.
My concern with the gaiters would be, I think you're, you'd be used to just being able to slide it up and down. So the next thing you know, they're pulling it down to, you know, when they're going to class or doing whatever, so that would be my only concern with those particularly.
Dan, on behalf of the committee, if that's all right with all five of you. Hi, Carolyn. I would, I would recommend that maybe I reach out to the Board of Health before our second reading and vote, and get a recommendation. And if not from the local, then I'll call the Mass Department of Public Health and see if they can give me a clearer recommendation on that.
Okay, yeah. And, and before we, I guess before we move on, if there are any other comments, how do people feel about the defined timeline on the mask policy? Are we okay with that? Or do we want to have it more of a general, as Kathleen was mentioning?
No, so you mean, keep it written the way that it is?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not unreasonable that we would have it as a permanent policy. I just thought it might be cleaner not to have this permanent policy. But, you know, it's a fine person board, and I don't want to, I don't want to speak for anybody, right? On any stretch.
So in the past, you've had policies, for example, that have changed around transportation. In '07, you had to change your policy. And just recently, we went through a full process of changing because we had very specific norm language that wasn't making a lot of sense and was actually causing us some more headaches. So you always have the right, again, the pandemic goes away, you can rescind it or you can leave it, and then just institute it as a fact, that's the protocol and procedures. It's really your call.
Right.
I have no problem if we're going to, when this is over, get it out of there. That's fine. I just don't want to see us putting something like that in, and then, God forbid, seven, 10 years down the road, something else comes and they have to put another one in that's very similar. So if we're going to vote to get this rid of this, once this is over, that's fine.
Yeah, and just say rescind on it. Kathleen, neither you or I will be around for this decision seven years from now.
Fingers crossed, none of us will be.
Just prosper hard on the pandemic in seven years.
Okay, so that's it.
That's why I said that timeline.
All right, so there's no vote on that, Joe, or anything like that? Are there any other comments or comments or questions from the public? I see none. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our actual chair, since she has joined us. Mrs. Gallagher, over to you.
Thank you. I don't really know where we're at, but thank everybody for giving me a little bit.
Say, shut up.
I'm sorry.
We're at the, we're on number four now, the discussion of fees.
Sure, so thank you for giving me a little leeway tonight. So I'm not sure if Dinesh shared with you. We are dropping Chloee off at college tomorrow, so we just had a little- We are dropping Chloe off at college tomorrow, so we just had a little family dinner, so.
Very nice.
Right here in our kitchen and. Unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever, I think a lot of colleges are just telling students sort of a few days ahead of time. So up until last Thursday or Friday, I can't remember which day, we didn't even know when Chloe would be going, so. We just have been waiting for for the date, so we finally got it, and it just happened to be tomorrow. So thanks, Dinesh, for covering for me. So I will turn it over to you, Dr. Beata, for a discussion on the fees.
Well, Ms. Gallagher, thanks for taking the time away from your family and best of luck to the kids. So the discussion on fees is always going to be one of these that's going to take place over time. We know right now that based on the 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 transportation of only twice a week. That we are going to recommend a one hundred and thirty dollar, one hundred and thirty-three dollar recommendation via Matt. Looking at the analysis of this, because we're not driving kids five days a, it just doesn't make any sense to charge three fifty for a service you're not providing. When we look at the athletic fee, that is still up in the air and there is no even discussion yet. Because we just don't know what this this all looked like. However, what I can tell you is, some of the recommendations that I'm hearing is local decision. By, in our case, the Tri Valley League as recommendations to the building principals, because that's the process under MIA. From there, the potential that is going to come to you folks for a recommendation to have sports or not, that's still up in the air. I'm not sure that that belongs with the school committee, but again, I'll defer to whatever the state thinks is best for school committees and everybody around. Added to that, there's a fourth season, basically a floating season, that some sports could potentially move in. Later in the year. Those have not been finalized either. In our particular case, added to all of this, we have lost our athletic trainer provider company. As of two weeks ago. So I'm also looking for us to take a look at our current trainer and seeing if she wants to stay on board with us. We're going to make an analysis of that and costs, not knowing if we even have sports here. The middle school sports is a whole different situation, because they are not under MIA regulations at all, number one. They are under their own league, which is the middle school Masapog, the, if I remember the the right title. Those principles. A mess, so I leave, thank you. So that, that decision would be separate, and that again would come from the principals. In our particular case, the other group that's that's not noted here, but is also a concern is activities. How do we actually hold some of our activities? We we could hold some of them remote. There's no doubt about that, and have some specific guidelines and have those activities taking place. But things like your, some of your theater and those types of things are probably in some ways may not be happening at all. Until we're out of this situation. So we have to kind of play this a little bit by ear on the recommendations coming forward. I'm expecting some movement on that on Wednesday. I'm also recommending we meet Thursday night this week. Potentially a general session and an executive session. I'm holding that executive session just because we're trying to come to agreement with the NTA, and it requires your vote. And when we look at the Little Lances preschool, we're seeing some significant drop in enrollment with students that are going to be, would be paying. So we still have a service delivery model required by the federal law that we provide students who need services in pre-K. The model has always been that you also are, most recently, but for years now, that you also utilize here. Students are part of that support, social, emotional, the idea of social development. The idea of learning how to get along with other students and each other, and that's a combination of both not only students who need a service. But also a student who can support that classroom and is learning themselves. A lot of the model is sometimes grounded in learning from each other. And and the the will, if you will, of how we all learn from each other. So how do you, how do you have that done? And what's, how do you get a fee for that service? So again, and Matt, feel free and and Vinnie to comment. But it's a catch twenty-two situation, because we want to provide the model. That we should be using, that we've been using for decades in Norton. But at the same time, also be able to financially do it in a way that is fair to those that are paying for a service.
So as a school committee or or what is the request for us?
So right now, we don't have this as a vote for you tonight. We just wanted to give it to you. We know that we have specific information and ready for an upcoming vote. For transportation, the one thirty-three, but we're also a little worried that collecting that money is a great idea. But then what happens if we go to full remote on October first or November first? Now I'm going to have to cut checks again going backwards. So we have to find the balance of bringing in, having a vote of a charge. And then it's the same, which is different from the normal fee, less fee. And then from there, having a process for, which we can do without a vote. I mean, as long as you voted, we can create a process. We don't want the town side to continuously have to worry about cutting checks back to people because the delivery of the service has changed. But it is a six-figure cut, if you will, to. To the line items that we still have to figure out as part of our responsibilities, and transportation in particular. If you place your budget within fees, they're not allowing us to use any of the grants to backfill the fees. It's an operational cost that does not allow for the grants to be part of that, which is unfortunate. Maybe there'll be a change later. So tonight, I don't have a request. We don't have a request for a vote, but we just want you to start thinking. And if you have specific questions that we need to address, then please email them to Matt. And Vinnie and Marie, if you want some specific, specific details. She should be releasing any day now our latest breakdown of number of kids that are asking, not asking, they only want to come twice a week or once a week, only remote or. Whatever the options, we can provide that to you as well.
I think we, you know, it is probably so difficult, right? Because this whole situation is really fluid. We're making a decision with the best information we can in the moment. But that doesn't mean on October first that things aren't going to change. And and how do we know that, right? So I appreciate you giving us the heads up and giving us this information. Maybe, you know, within the next week or two, we'll see something different. You know, we'll know more certainly about athletics, but for right now, I guess we just will continue to. Gather that information and keep us updated.
Yeah, I I don't, I just don't want the committee to kind of, you know, you know, the old, we don't want to find out. We used to say Roach Brothers, but they're gone. We don't want you to be shopping on a Saturday morning and people are yelling and screaming about fees. At least right now, you can say, listen, we're working on it. It's fluid. They give you a specific, but let it be known that we're trying to financially make it. Make it out. And don't forget, we still have double digital unemployment in the area. So there's another concern here, which is how many more families are going to be asking for support. From, you know, third parties and all of that, which the town, as we all know, is very generous with in terms of the status. I can't tell you the number of kids that we've taken. Supported in in the last seven, now going on eight years that I've been in town, so. Which is a kudos to 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 the community.
I agree. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
One, one thing that we may want to think about, I I understand the difficulty of cutting checks to return money. We should also think about it the other way as well. I think if we end up going full-time back to school, it it's going to be tough to ask people to send more money, you know, and and I, I know we're thinking that that's the way we're going to go. But, you know, we we may need to start thinking that the one thirty-three, one thirty-three is is actually, is going to be on cap for the yearly. We may return it if we we, or some pro rata, if we go remote, but I think if we go full, it's going to be difficult to go back and we say we want more money.
And and I think that's what the, yeah, I think that was Matt's approach, was to kind of like try to have a number that we could work with. Within reason, and then throughout the year, literally finding the remaining if we do go to five days a week of transporting.
Well, thanks. A lot to think about. I think. It'll be interesting to see what the next, you know, few weeks bring, so.
I have no other business except just to tell you that we are going to meet on the twenty-seventh, what that looks like. It could be a regular session, moving to executive session, or it could actually be an executive session first, to then move into public session. Because any CBA impact bargaining agreement you make, you must take that vote publicly. You can deliberate it. Amongst yourself, but then you have to come out and deliberate it in the public as well. So just keep that in mind.
When does that decision get made?
We had a, we had a marathon meeting today with the Norton Teachers Association. It went very well, very positive. There's still some glitches that we have to work through, but we're down to less than a half a dozen items, all critical to both sides. But we took off somewhere around thirty items off the list today that we we are recommending agreement with by the school committee. So we're in a good place there. We're scheduling another two-hour session on Wednesday, where both sides are going to try to give some more clarity. And that's one of the reasons why we're going into executive session tonight, to provide you an update and then where we really are in the process.
Great, appreciate that. All right, so without any further items, any last minute comments?
Uh, Kestha, I just wanted to say, you're doing the CPAC meeting tomorrow night? So I am your liaison, so if you can just send me the link to that, I'll just come along in the beginning and just say, you know, I'm your liaison, give my information.
You didn't get the link for that, Kathy? Oh, sorry about that. It was on, it was on the list. We'll get it to you. I apologize.
Madam Chair, your, you are, your motion is to go into the executive session for the purposes of impact bargaining information with the NTA. And you will not be coming back to your regular session, and you require a roll call.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn to move into executive session, and we will not be returning to a regular school committee.
So moved.
Thanks, Dan. Is there a second? Thanks. So Sheri?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
And Carolyn, yes.
You have another link. You have a separate link to go into executive session.
Great. Yes, thank you. In a few minutes.